Good evening. Welcome, everyone. I would like to call the April 10th, 2025 Melville School District Board Reorganization Meeting to Order. If we could please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Now I am going to do roll call. Tori Belkey.
Here.
I'm Peggy Hassler. Scott Hugrich.
Here.
Patrick McKelvey.
Present.
Jean Prado.
Here.
And Jeff Woolman.
Here.
If I could please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Communications, open period for patron comments. There is no one signed up tonight. So now we need to, as everyone knows, we had an election this past Tuesday, not even 48 hours ago. And so we need to make a motion to accept the unofficial results until certified by the St. Louis County Board of Election Commissioners and to declare the election of Ann Zimfer and Serene Wilkinson to a three-year term on the Melville School District Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Congratulations, Serene and Ann. Next is action items by consent. Does anyone need to pull anything? If I could please get a motion to approve action items by consent, A and B.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Now, we are going to recognize Scott Hugrich for the three-year term that he served for us. And so first, we're going to hear from Jeff.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Jessica Popillo, Director of Communications. And I'd actually like to start with recognition of Peggy Hassler for serving as Board President this past term. On behalf of the Melville School District, the district administration, our employees and students served, I would like to congratulate Mrs. Peggy Hassler for completing her third year as President of the Melville School District Board of Education. We are grateful to you for your service, leadership, and commitment to the students, families, and employees of Melville School District. Please accept this gavel as a symbol of our appreciation of your service.
And I appreciate this, but I just want everybody to know that we are a team sitting up here, and so I really don't deserve this. But I appreciate everybody sitting at the table and everybody in the room. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Also, on behalf of Melville School District, the administration, our employees and students served, I'd like to thank Mr. Scott Hugrich for your service to the Board of Education for the past three years. Mr. Hugrich, we thank you for your thoughtful decision-making on policy, finance, and governance that always places the best interest of our students, staff, and community at the forefront. Please accept this plaque as a symbol of our appreciation for your service.
There's more, though. Some additional people wanted to recognize your service. Students and staff from both high schools wish to recognize you with the following gifts. They have provided these for former Director Grace Wright as well, who we recognized at the February meeting. So we will go with Oakville High School first. They built two end tables to honor and thank Scott Hugrich and Grace Wright. The following students worked on these tables. Jayden Barney, independent study in woodworking. Jack Walshlager, advanced woodworking. Anis Cottage, Woods Two. Jeff Tunzing, a cadet teacher, and the students in the AMP program. They are led by teachers Susan Mueller and Matt Schrout. And then Melville High School built two clocks to honor and thank Scott Hugrich and Grace Wright. These clocks were crafted by students in the geometry and construction class, led by Stephanie Giuliano and Robert Mitchell. Thank you for your service.
I don't mind. I would like to say something. Just want to congratulate you on three amazing years. And I said this to Grace before, and I want to recognize it again. You've been involved in our district in one capacity or another through scouts for a really long time, and then were willing to step up in a much greater role to serve this district and this community in the capacity on the Board of Education for three years. And it's pretty spectacular to do what you do as a volunteer to this district on top of being a successful business owner, a husband, a father, and a grandfather, and find the time to serve and be a servant leader to our community, to our students, to our teachers, to our entire district. And you should be recognized for that. So it's been a great three years. And sometimes we've come at things from different angles, and it's always been amazing to see your dedication to our students. You've always been focused on that and what's in the best interest. And it shows. We were just talking before the meeting started about all of the accomplishments of the district, and I think that forward momentum that we've continued to go on that path with, you know, the great leaders in this district. And so it's been a privilege to serve with you, and I wish you the best of luck. Yeah.
I'd like to say something, if I may. Scott, it seems like just yesterday that Larry Felton and I met you at the little cafe to talk about what your intentions were and how we could help you out if you became a board member.
I remember that. It seemed like everybody in place knew you.
Go figure. It was in Columbia. What can I say? Anyway, I want to, if I could give you a nickname, it'd be Mr. Scrutiny, because you did indeed scrutinize everything that came before you as a member of this board. And we liked that. We may not have always acted like we liked them, but we did. You know, these are the things that make a board good, you know, that we have to see things from all sides. And you were the perfect person to do that. So I want to wish you the best in your future. I know you're going to enjoy it with your family, and you're going to have more time with them, and may your business thrive. And good health, and enjoy your future.
Thank you.
So, first off, I just want to apologize for telling you we needed someone to run for the school board. For those who don't know, Scott and I worked on a food drive together, and I've known Scott's son, Ryan, for many years. I've been friends with his son since I was a freshman in high school. His son was an upperclassman. I was in choir, so just helping me, show me the ropes in high school and all that. And then I was lucky enough to attend his son's wedding in New York City in Brooklyn. And we had just got done running this food drive, and it was like, everything was great. It was such a phenomenal time. And Scott goes, man, you've been such a great help to me. So glad you're here. If I can ever do anything for you, let me know.
I don't remember saying that, but.
And I was just like, I was like, you know, I was like, cool. I was like, I don't know. He owns a video production company, you know. I really could use a new mug shot, you know. Like, what, what, I don't know. Like, what, what, what are you going to say that? And then we get to the election, and no one's filed yet. And I was like, Scott, you do the scholarship thing at Melville High School? He's like, yep, went to Melville High School. And then it was like, oh, I did scouts. I did this too. And I was like, well, no one's filed to run for the board yet. Would that be something you're interested in? I think your first answer was no.
My first question was how long? And you said three years. And I'm like, what? Three years?
And then it was like.
But it's only one meeting a month.
That was my next thing. It's like, you immediately start lying to people. You're like, it's one meeting a month. The committees are, they're on Zoom, probably because of COVID at the time. Like, who cares? It's like, we don't, there is going to be prop y, but like, you know, it's one meeting a month. And then, you know, just, we were recapping your term and everything that's happened, because we were talking, you know, that long. But it's like, hired a new superintendent, passed propy, increased teacher pay, you know, high school assistant principals, all of these things that have happened in your past three years where you can't help but look and be like, man, you were a part of these three pivotal years. And like, I hate talking about COVID again, but like, we were still coming out of COVID. It's 2025 now. Hopefully, I never have to worry about a pandemic again. But we still were dealing with those decisions and how we were trying to handle that and interventionists and all these other things. But like, you should be so proud of your time here and that you came back to serve the district. You being a Melville alumni along with Peggy is so important. I went to Oakville, of course, and it's like, it's been so great to have a district alumni that was so invested in your community. And thanks for picking up the phone, and thanks for dedicating yourself to this district.
I remember that call. It was supposed to be about the next food drive, and you turned it into this.
And then we kind of did a dress code.
Absolutely.
And lied a little bit.
Yeah.
It always starts with some kind of, hmm, would you be interested in? And the one meeting a month is going to be infamous for this district until the end of time. But you did step up. You did a lot for this district. There's a lot of boxes you checked in a three-year timeframe, and not every board member gets that luxury. So you can definitely point at plenty of things and say, I helped with that. I worked with an amazing team to do that. And you definitely did the scrutiny thing very well. And you and I have had some interesting sidebar conversations over the last three years, sitting next to one another. And I was still impressed that you thought after two years of doing this, I was a good resource to help you along, and that meant a lot to me, that you would look at me as a resource, that if you had questions, you would ask. And I appreciate that. I tried to do the best I could for that. And it seems like I did something good in that, because you've done a lot in the last three years. But I also remember that Broadkill meeting and went, how exactly are we going to sidebar into, would you like to run for the school board? But I very much appreciate you being here. I very much appreciate stepping up to a volunteer position. That is a lot, but you gave it your all and then some. And I was very impressed with what you did. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Yes. And it's really hard to beat all these people. I don't know why I didn't go first, actually. But, yeah, but I really valued your time on the board. Always, you always had an upbeat presence to the district, always thinking about the kids and what would be the right decisions for the kids and the staff. And that's all we can ask, in addition to the food drives that you drove within the district. I mean, that is really awesome. Bringing community service not only to the community, but also to our students and having them participate at each school level. You know, you were just always there to support really anything that we needed done, and we appreciate it. And as Tori said, you know, you have to multitask between your business and your family and your grandchildren. And a lot of people think children get easier when they get older, but sometimes I think they're a little harder, actually. So anyway, we, I don't have enough good things to say about you, and thank you for your service to the district. We very, very much appreciate it, and we hope that you will remain present and continue to do good things.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is it my turn now?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm not sure that anybody could really know exactly what to expect when you assume a position like this. But it has been an incredible experience. And, you know, you guys were all thanking me. I think I have to share some thank yous. First, to the community, for somebody who never really considered running for an elected position, to be given the honor to serve in this capacity is, it was overwhelming, to be honest with you. The trust that the community put in me and all of these other board members when we're elected, it's an awesome responsibility. And I just can't thank the community enough for believing in me. To our administration team, whenever I saw, whenever I was engaged with you guys in any capacity, and this is for all of our administrators, I never really felt like you were just doing your job. It kind of felt to me like you guys were engaged in your calling. Because people that work at a job, many times, it's nine to five. Many times, they turn it off when they go home. And I can tell you this right now, that our administrative team does not turn it off. They love the students here, and it is clear. And when you have a leadership team that is so inspired in what they're doing, it is clearly going to permeate the entire organization. And I think that's exactly what has happened here. Everybody that is working in our individual schools, I was always amazed walking into any of our schools, because you're immediately hit with this feeling of optimism and care for our students. It's uplifting. And one of the things that I think has touched me most throughout my life is when I see people acting in service of others. And there is no doubt that happens in our schools. And it feels, I know it's a job, but it feels like it's unconditional caring to me, and it's really, really moving to see. To our board, you guys have been awesome. I mean, there is no doubt about it. I'm going to have brief comments about everybody here. Jeff, I spoke to you about this a little bit in the parking lot out here, but you are incredibly detail-oriented. I mean, there's absolutely no doubt about it. And we really needed somebody to be as detail-oriented as Jeff is. And, you know, when I told you that I don't care how long I was going to be in this board, you were always going to feel like a mentor, then that is exactly the way I always looked up to you. And actually, for everybody here. Jean, your amazing knowledge base and your professional experience, I mean, it was such an addition. Well, I shouldn't say addition, because you've been here for several years, but it was so incredibly valued. The perspective that you brought, just incredible. Patrick, what the heck are you doing accomplishing all this in your twenties? I mean, seriously, your educational knowledge is well beyond your age. There's absolutely no doubt about it. You're running a food bank right now? I mean, seriously, you have a, you've already had a tremendous life, but what you've got in front of you, I think is going to pale in comparison. And by the way, your infectious enthusiasm was also greatly appreciated, and it meant a lot to me. I know others that are around you. Tori, there is no doubt that there's a lot of love in your heart, because you can see it is shared with everybody around you, and specifically, all of your actions. As a board member, they're always directed to the care and compassion of our children. And it's just wonderful to see. And Peggy, I mean, I've said it in public in many instances, but you have got a tremendous work ethic. I seriously don't know if you ever turn it off. I don't think you do. I've really enjoyed meeting and chatting up with your husband. And, you know, I, yeah, no, I think he's great. And, you know, I was talking to him about you, and I'm like, how does she get all this done? And she's like, he's always, she's always down there on the computer after dinner every night, you know, working. And I'm like, well, she has to, as much as she does. By the way, whenever there's an email that comes in to the board, the entire board, Peggy always responds. And she does a tremendous job at responding very, very quickly. These emails can come in at 11 o'clock on a Tuesday, and she's responding at noon later that day, literally, I guess, at work. And I.
But the speed at which you, the speed and diligence in which you respond to public, because generally, when the public is emailing us, there is a problem that they want addressed. And the way that Peggy would respond to those emails, I think it really put our community members at ease, because they know that we're listening and we're on it. And that's specifically because of all of the actions that you took there. So thank you. The bottom line is, before I was elected, I liked and respected each of you. And as I sit here today, I like and respect each of you even more. So the way I look at it is that is a tremendous partnership. Is that reflect over the last three years? There's been a lot that has changed in the world. There's a lot of international conflict, obviously, going on. We're continuing to lose our ability to understand and empathize with those that are different than us. And technology has seemingly exploded over the last three years. AI was, it almost seems science fiction back in 2022. It seemed like something that we weren't going to have to deal with. But now, within three short years, there are, of course, we know it, automated writing systems. There are automated artistic, there are automated systems for artistic expression that create photos and illustration and video and music and voice. There are automated technical capabilities that are generating code automatically, very robust code. So all of this has exploded so fast that an advertising executive that I know and admire recently told me that his firm was no longer going to hire writers. And if you can imagine that, advertising writing has probably been a job as long as we have traded goods. And he's telling me that he doesn't think that they're going to hire writers at his agency anymore. And then you hear about companies like Meta and other tech companies that are claiming that they are no longer going to hire any coders. So AI is affecting people's ability to monetize their skill, both in the arts through writing and through something very technical, such as writing code. To say that this is going to disrupt the labor market, I think is somewhat of an understatement. It's really hard to understand how things are going to shake out, but we know that there's going to be a significant change. And then when you put that in context of the core responsibilities of public schools, I believe one of the core responsibilities is to prepare students to thrive into the future. But how can this be accomplished if we don't exactly know what the future is going to look like? Because I think it's very hard to predict exactly what's going to take hold over the next five to 10 years. So in doing my reflecting on what's happened in the world over the last three years, I also was reflecting on what's been accomplished at the Melville School District over the last three years, which I believe has been significant. We have navigated significant inflation and supply chain
We have navigated significant inflation and supply chain disruptions to successfully complete many prop-esque construction jobs, which have made our schools safer, and we maintained our budgets on those. For many years, I think perhaps dating back to the early 2000s, we paid our educational professionals and other staff members below-market wages, which I think was, quite frankly, an atrocity. And I'm not, I don't know that there was any efforts over that time, I'm sure there was discussions on ways to fix it, but with the support of the community, we ended this longstanding problem. And I think it was, that is a tremendous accomplishment. We made additional improvements to our facilities by addressing our future HVAC needs in a very cost-effective manner. And lastly, we realized very, very significant academic achievement improvements last year. And most people in this room know that one of the things that I have advocated for over the last three years has been improvement in academics. And I can tell everybody that what was accomplished last year was well beyond what I thought was possible. And Dr. Hogg, your, your team did a tremendous job with this, there's absolutely no doubt about that. So when we consider what we've accomplished over the last three years, you realize that we will continue to rise to whatever the future demands. The need for the Melville School District to not only prepare our students for the world as it is, but to equip them to lead in a world that has not yet been invented, will be significant. But I am certain that this district will continue to do just that.
Okay, so hopefully, can somebody lock the door so that Serene and Ann don't run?[837.19][837.19](laughter) Yeah, so we still have to adjourn.
Not quite.
Okay. So, moving on to adjournment, if I could please get a motion to adjourn, sine de yea.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Well, thank you again.
Okay, at this point, Susan will have the two candidates come up and issue the oath.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri, and that I will faithfully and impartially leave myself in office discharge the duties of school director in and for the Melville School District, R and I, Army of St. Louis, State of Missouri, to the best of my ability, according
Ann, we have you over here. All right, thank you and good evening, Board of Education. I will lead the meeting for the election of the President and Vice President. After the approval of the Vice President, I will turn the meeting back over to the President. So at this point, I open the floor for nominations of President of the Melville Board of Education.
I nominate Peggy Hasler.
I second.
Peggy, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, is there a motion to cease nominations and accept Peggy Hasler by acclamation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Congratulations, Peggy. Onto the Vice President, I open the floor for nominations of Vice President of the Melville Board of Education.
I would like to nominate Tori Belkey for Vice President.
And I'd like to second.
Tori, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, is there a motion to cease nominations and accept Tori by acclamation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Congratulations, Tori. Peggy, the meeting is yours again.
Okay, thank you. If I could please get a nomination for Secretary?
I would like to nominate Jeff Wolman for Secretary.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, if I could please get a motion to, to cease, is that what you said? I, is it? You should have given me your right hand. Can we cease nominations?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, if I could please get a nomination for Treasurer?
I'd nominate Marshall Crutcher.
And I second.[1130.22][1130.22](laughter)
Any other nominations?
He could have declined.
Yeah.
Are you gonna ask him if he accepts?
Do you accept?
And I accept, by the way.
Oh, sorry. See, I didn't have any of that verbiage.[1146.15][1146.15](laughter) Sorry about that. Okay, so any other nominations? No?
No.
Okay, so cease nominations?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Okay, next is consider Board of Education Committee assignments for 2526, as listed on the agenda. These committees are Insurance, Facilities, Finance, Policy, Communications, and Advocacy Committee. Each board member rotates each year, and we serve on two or three committees throughout the district. So if I could please get a motion to approve the Board of Education Committee assignments for 2526 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero.
Seven, zero.
Seven, zero, oh my gosh, it's been six for so many months.
We're back.
Sorry about that.
Anna Serene, please feel free to hop in for a first or a second here.[1212.83][1212.83](laughter) Dip your toes in the water.[1215.08][1215.08](laughter)
Next is, we have to nominate an MSBA delegate and an alternate, so if, I would like to nominate Jeff Wolman as the delegate and Jean Preto as the alternate.
Second.
Any other nominations? Do you accept?
I'll accept.
I accept.
Okay, I'll cease nominations. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Okay, next, I could, if I could get an SSD Governing Council delegate and alternate nomination?
I'd like to nominate Patrick McKelvey for SSD primary, and Ann Zepfer for alternate.
Okay, any other nominations? Do you accept Patrick and Ann?
Yes.
Okay, cease nominations. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, anybody opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Okay, next is Communications, Student Advisors to the Board of Education. From Oakville, we have Voldana Korkarik, and from Melville High School, we have Elliot Parai. These students were nominated by their principals in their high schools to serve as the Board of Education Student Reps, and each month, they come and they give us an update on what's going on in their schools. So Voldana, you wanna go first?
Yep. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start tonight off by talking about testing season. Testing season is officially here, students are getting ready for the ACT and, of course, exams and AP testing. It's a busy and sometimes stressful time, but our teachers and staff have been working very hard to make sure we're as prepared as possible. We also have some exciting events coming up. Annually, Oakville and Melville High School host an international festival. This year, it will be held at Melville High School on April 18th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. This is a great opportunity for students and families to come together, celebrate different cultures, and enjoy food, music, and performances from all around the world. Our Theater Department is also in the spotlight this week. They are performing Puffs, a fun and creative spoof of Harry Potter. Shows are happening tonight, tomorrow, and the day after at Naughtleman Auditorium at 7:00 p.m. It's a great way to show support to our drama students who have been working very hard preparing this performance for you all to enjoy. Spring sports are also in full swing. Our athletes have been putting in a lot of hard work, and it's been great to see students showing their support at games and matches. I recommend that you all come out and see some of our teams in action. Prom is right around the corner, May 10th. There's a lot of excitement building, and students are looking forward to a fun and safe night to celebrate the end of the year. And of course, graduation is on June 1st. Seniors are counting down the days, and there's a mix of excitement and nostalgia as they get ready to move on to their next chapter. Thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you very much.
I'd like to mention that the International Festival is one of my favorite things to go to every year. If you get a chance, you really ought to try to get to that, it's really cool.
Elliot, from Melville High School?
By the way, Elliot's 16 today. Happy birthday, Elliot.[1420.13][1420.13](applause)
Thank you. I'd like to start by echoing what they two said, which is that the International Festival is a lot of fun, and it's a lot of fun to put on as well, and I know, because I'm doing that partially. In other news, Melville High School's symphonic band recently returned from their annual trip. We rehearsed at Missouri State and went to Albuquerque and performed in downtown Santa Fe. Melville Choirs also returned from their trip, and they went to Branson and performed. We have Special Olympics coming up. Most of our students are signed up to help as buddies, timers, or at the Olympic Village to help showcase clubs and extracurriculars to our athletes.
What date is that, Elliot?
That's next week, next Thursday.
Next Thursday?
April 17th. Sophomores and juniors are testing, while freshmen and seniors are completing community service projects. I don't remember the day exactly, but we care about our community. And this week, Melville High School students have attended cybersecurity assemblies to learn about staying safe in the digital age. Thank you.
I would also like to add, if you do come to the International Festival, you should come visit the Bosnian stand. I will be hosting, and you can come try some delicious Bosnian baklava.
Okay. Baklava. All right, thank you, guys. That was fantastic. Next is recognition of staff, students, and community volunteers. Mr. McMullin, do you want to recognize your student?
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everyone, especially the new people. I'm Scott McMullin, the Director of the Scope Alternative Education Program, and this is one of my teachers, Heather Proffins, and she's gonna announce our student. He wasn't able to attend, but we still wanna acknowledge what he's contributed and accomplished this year.
Yes, unfortunately, Lucas was not able to be here, but we, Scope would like to proudly recognize Lucas Hughes, for his outstanding achievements and remarkable growth, especially in the area of math. During this time at Scope, he was determined to, you know, pass his HSET test, he demonstrated exceptional perseverance and determination, and he overcame those hurdles that, you know, were in his way, you know, kinda stopping him at first from even getting into the program. He persevered, he, you know, he's up there, he's, he's passed almost everything, and so it's, it's a pleasure to, to recognize his achievements.[1574.15][1574.15](applause)
It's not very often that my staff is in the spotlight, because they really are behind the scenes, but I wanna acknowledge Ms. Proffins, she is our ELA teacher for the HSET and Missouri Option, and I'll go a little bit more in depth in my presentation, but last year, out of the 90-plus students that took the essay part, all of them passed, she did not have one fail. This year, she had 69 students take the ELA, or the written expression, and only one student failed. So she's got like a 99% pass rate the past two years, so just a phenomenal job.
Thank you. Next is MNEA, Sarah Regan and Cindy Kidwell.
Hello, I am Sarah Regan, co-president of Melville NEA.
And I am Cindy Kidwell.
Each month, we like to take a moment to recognize a student from each of the presenting schools, and tonight, we would like to acknowledge John from Scope.
Hi, my name is Deana Tice, and I am the counselor at Scope School, and this is John Meriwether, who is an awesome kiddo, and I'm gonna read all this, but I just wanna let you know that he touches every heart of every person he's ever met, and we're all really rooting for him as he goes through our program. John Meriwether is a current MoOption student. He has worked hard to complete all the requirements for graduation. He has met some challenges during his high school journey, but he has chosen to overcome any obstacles that is, that have stood in his way. John is a role model for other students. His successes have inspired other students to achieve things they might, may not have otherwise. He has a positive disposition and a gentle strength. No matter what mood he is in or his level of stress, he always remains kind and polite to staff and peers. It is with great pleasure that I, that we award Melville NEA Student of the Month to
All right, congratulations. Next is the report on student achievement from Scope, and so we're gonna ask Mr. Scott McMullin to come back up again.
Hello, once again. Our first celebration at our school, this picture embodies everything that our school's about. It's the key to our success and, you know, our why for being here. And in this picture, there's a student at our Scope graduation with his mom and two of my staff. And our next Scope graduation, by the way, is May 23rd, so you guys are all cordially invited. I'll send an invite to Peggy, who'll send it to everybody else probably soon. But one of the things I want to celebrate is our graduation. We graduate approximately 100 students per year. And the most significant thing about that number is that most of those students are students who don't have any chance mathematically of graduating on time or at all. And so there's just a testament to the hard work that our staff puts in to meet our students academically where they're at, build on their skills, create a sense of self-efficacy, which leads to their continued success. Our next cause of celebration is managing student behavior. It doesn't matter whether it's a traditional educational setting or non-traditional. Managing student behavior is key to their success. When we first started taking data or looking at data, in 2014, 2017, we averaged 363 disciplinary referrals per year. And so it's not 363 over that three-year period, that was the average. But as you can see, from 2021 on to 2024, '25, we went to 47, then the next year, 38. Last year, it was 21, and this year, we've only had 12 disciplinary referrals, which is pretty phenomenal considering most of our students struggle with self-regulation, self-monitoring, and that's the reason for their referrals. A key aspect to our decline in discipline is we take a proactive approach. Our team works really hard as far as analyzing student data. We post consequences and expectations throughout our building, and we teach them those skills, and we model them. We use several behavior interventions such as Y-TRY, SEL Panorama, PBIS, and Moral Reasoning Training. And all of those go into creating a discipline model and procedures for our building. Our school is a consortium, so it's composed of students from Lindbergh, Bayless, Afton, and Melville. As you can see during that breakdown, Melville constitutes 75% of our students. Bayless, 10%, Lindbergh, 7%, and Afton, 8%. On average, we serve about 200 students per year, and so that kind of gives you an overview of kind of, you know, what our student breakdown and enrollment distribution is. Most of our students are in our school through our Missouri Option program, and I'll expand that a little bit more in detail. And then the other 37% is for discipline, whether it's short-term suspensions or even long-term suspensions depending on the consortium. So what is Missouri Option? Those of you who are new, Missouri Option is a program designed for students who are behind on credits. And that contributes to our graduation rate and the number of students that actually graduate each year. And so students that are in this program have to be 17, credit efficient, but they also have to pass exit exams or high-stakes tests in the areas of math, science, social studies, reading comprehension, and writing. And that's when I mentioned Ms. Proffins earlier, just how impressive her numbers are, because these students have not done well historically academically. The exam is sanctioned by the state of Missouri. So once students take the HIC and they pass it, they don't come to Scope in person anymore. They just have to work 30 hours a week. They also have to do 10 hours of volunteer work one time only, and then that would be the rest of their academic program until their cohort graduation. Some of the requirements are state and Missouri Option requirements, the volunteer hours, the Constitution test, the required EOCs, the ASVAB Work Keys ACT. And one of the criteria to get into the program is students have to be able to perform on a 12th grade level. And so that just talks about whenever kids come into our building, sometimes they're on a 9th grade level. And that's why it's so important that our staff, or the contributions that our staff makes to be able to meet those students on their ability levels, and then scaffold their abilities so they're able to meet the requirements to pass the HIC. Our school improvement goals, obviously the HIC is a big one since it's 63% of our students that come into the program. Our school improvement plan is, our goal is a minimum of 80% pass rate on the HIC exam. So far, we are at an 85%, which is about the average over the past seven years. So we still want to make sure we can meet that average. So right now, we're at 85, hopefully that'll continue. 90% or more of our students will have less than three disciplinary referrals. Earlier, I mentioned that we had only 12 referrals all year, and so we've only had one student have more than two referrals. So 99% of our students have met that criteria. Of those 12 referrals, 10 students had the 12 disciplinary referrals. So 95% of our students never had a disciplinary referral at all, so I think that's just really incredible and a testament to the work that my staff has done. 90% or more of our juniors and seniors will complete the Work Keys assessment. Right now, we are at 85%. We didn't receive Work Keys training until the end of December. So the seven students, so 39 out of 46 students did take the Work Keys, but of that seven, they moved out of district or they completed Missouri Option or returned to their ascending school because of long-term suspension. So next year, because we've already been trained on it, I expect that number to be higher than 90. So one thing that I look forward to is preparing our students for life after high school. This is a picture of our students going on an annual field trip to the South County Trades Cooperative. And so our students, about 10% of them go to college, the other 90% join the workforce. So we just feel it's really important that we focus on students getting involved in the trades, because those are professions that a lot of them are interested in, and also it doesn't require them to go to school or incur a great deal of debt. Because most of our students, or many of them, are the first-time graduates of high school. So college is not on their radar, just survival is the key thing. And so preparing them for careers immediately after school is extremely important. And I'd like to give us a big thanks to our Scope staff, because everything begins and ends with them. All the initiatives and interventions, all of those things come through collaboration and everyone being supportive and understanding of each other's strengths and weaknesses. That's a summation of our Scope Alternative Program. It's been a wonderful experience, and we just have so many wonderful kids that come through our system. So thank you all for supporting that.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. McMullin, and definitely thank you to your staff, all of them. Scope is one of my favorite schools to hear about because of your success stories. You do amazing things for kids that might not otherwise succeed. So kudos to you. We, a lot of times, we hear just heartwarming stories from parents on how you and your staff have just absolutely saved their children's life. So kudos to you and your staff, keep up the good work, we appreciate everything you do. And I just can't brag about your leadership at that location and school and building or whatever you call it enough, so thank you.
You're welcome, my pleasure.
I wanted to echo what Peggy just said about your leadership. I wanted to specifically highlight something. Scott has me in the spirit. Your building is so unique because you have so many different students from so many different schools. And one of my favorite things about you is, I always, whether I'm at Melville, Oakville, and I know you go other places too, you always tell me when I see you're like, "I promised a kid I would be here." And like, you always show up, and like, that has meant the world to me. Just seeing you out in public and like, at so many different schools, it really means a lot to me that you are such a visible leader. Obviously, leading Scope is something, but then going back out in the other schools and seeing it, and I really appreciate just how visible you are in our community. And I just wanted to highlight that. You go above and beyond any expectation of you, so I just want to say thank you, and it's noted.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay. Next is Finance Committee Report. Marshall Crutcher?
Good evening, I'm Marshall Crutcher. I'm the Chief Financial Officer, and tonight, the Finance Committee is here to make a presentation of their report. The first, just a couple of opening comments. I had handouts passed out. So if you looked on your handouts, the handout shows the Finance Committee presentation slides in addition to the agenda write-up. And then behind the presentation slides, the last three pages are some supplemental data. So the third page from the very back will show the six finance options that we looked at. And then the other two pages are some other supplemental data of annual recurring capital costs and unfunded Prop S projects. The six finance options are really what was reviewed by the Finance Committee in January and February. Basically, we have Prop A expiring after this year for 3.26 cents roughly. We expect an estimated 2.4 cents on debt service freeing up after fiscal year '26. So that's almost 5.7 cents. And what do we do with that? Those six options on that page are what we really discussed. So basically, I wanted to have, you know, have you be able to reference that while Mark makes his presentation. So with that, I will turn this over to Mark Hinson, the Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Marshall. First, I'd like to start by saying thank you for the opportunity. We are here at your request, and this is really, I know people may think this is odd, but this is the reason why we serve the school district, is to utilize our knowledge and our experience to assist the district with financial decisions that the district faces. And so Peggy brought to us a request that asked what would we recommend as a Finance Committee related to a decision going forward related to the Prop A sunsetting and the reduced debt service levy from that standpoint of things. So there are two taxes that are potentially either sunsetting or, you know, going away. Prop A is a temporary levy that funds capital purchases, and there's also a debt service levy that has been used to pay off debt that has been used for capital. Those are both coming to the end of the term, and so there was a question as to what should we do with them. What are the amounts that are in question here? The estimated total of the combined levy is 5.66 cents between the two. It produces for the school district about $1.4 million annually. And we looked at this, in looking at the options, one of the things we were focused on is a long-term strategy of funding annual capital needs of the district. So we looked at some recurring annual capital needs, and we focused on roof replacement and maintenance, vehicles that are needed for transportation, primarily transportation of students, parking lot maintenance, and technology. That was, they're the primary areas, we talked about others, but those were, you know, primary areas. The total predictable annual capital costs that are needed to fund these areas are approximately 9.22 cents, or about 2.3 million annually, based upon the history of the district. So after examining the options that Marshall mentioned earlier, the committee came up with a unanimous recommendation, and we would recommend to place a measure on the ballot to convert both of these levies that are reducing and make it a permanent operating fund levy that would result in a no-tax increase because they're already in place. It would require a simple majority to pass. Like I alluded to previously, our goal as a committee is to look for and to identify a long-term strategy to fund eventually all, but in this case, most of the recurring capital needs of the district. This provides long-term strategic funding for a portion of the district's predictable recurring capital needs. You know, what we would recommend on this is we would recommend a restriction as well to satisfy community that this is being used in a responsible manner. So we would recommend that we place in the measure that the funds can only be used for the four primary areas we looked at, as well as potentially building security needs from that standpoint. That generates a perpetual revenue stream that is dedicated for these capital needs of the district. What are some of the benefits of this going forward? We often, as a district, face budget shortfalls. What's inevitable in those times is that these budget shortfalls end up deferring and delaying maintenance when those budgets get tight. And this helps remove that temptation because there's a dedicated levy that is funding these capital needs, which are critical. It prevents us from ending up relying on debt financing for what really amounts to long-term maintenance and upgrades for the district that the district really needs to maintain its facilities to provide safe locations for education for the students. We also looked at the negatives, and we want to be realistic about this. There is one negative, and this is an opportunity that we could have to sunset some taxes and to reduce the tax levy, essentially by 5.66 cents. When we looked at this as a committee, basically, what we felt like there was a large positive benefit to the district that funds more than half, about 66%, if I remember the numbers correctly, of the district's recurring annual financial needs, in an amount that has a relatively small impact on individual households overall from that standpoint. So we felt like this was such an opportunity to obtain a perpetual funding mechanism for these capital needs of the district. It prevents the reliance on debt financing, the incurrence of interest to pay these when we sometimes fall behind like we have as a district. And we feel like that offsets this negative in a significant manner. Also wanted to open then with that, that concludes what I wanted to say and see if you guys had any questions.
Mark, I was hoping you could provide clarification on this, I don't think we've mentioned it yet. Who is the Finance Committee made up of?
The, I hesitate to name names because I'm afraid of forgetting somebody, but they are basically, the guidelines are that they are individuals that have a financial background, training, education, work experience within accounting and the financial services industry. So we're experienced in making large-scale financial decisions for businesses, not-for-profit organizations, and governmental entities from that standpoint.
And the people of your committee are primarily community members of the Melville School District, right?
I can't think of anybody that's not a resident of this Melville School District.
Perfect, thanks.
And that's a requirement in the charter that you are a community member, so I believe it's...
Except for some of the employees.
Yeah, if there's an employee on there, yes.
I appreciate the fact that you've got the six options out here, because it's good to see that the benefits for GEO bonds, obviously, versus just renewing the levy as is. And the point of putting in the requirements of what the levy can be spent on is a very smart idea. I appreciate that being a bit at the back of it, so we can say if the fund's going to be used for the following, so that way, there's no question to the community about what it's going to be spent on. And as we've seen, obviously, interest rates are going to be questionable probably for the next few years. A levy is a lot easier way to do it, so if we can get 2/3 of the way for our needs with that, and it doesn't change the taxable rate, then I think that's a very smart move.
Well, and it will prevent us from falling so far behind, we've been playing catch-up for how many years on our facilities? We are nowhere close to being finished, but this will help us with those cyclical needs that we have to have, and it can't be bartered away for something else. So no matter who, and no matter who is making the decisions, whether it be a different cabinet and superintendent or a different board, they can't use those pennies, should this pass, to pay for something else out of operations. It will be exclusive to those items being used. And I just think that that's a really smart way to be able, and we can plan that way too, for redoing our parking lots and transportation and roofs, HVAC. too, for redoing our parking lots and transportation and roofs, HVAC. We finally just caught up with what every one of our HVAC units is 10 years or younger. Yes, and so, and prior to that, they were all 20 years or older, probably? Yeah.
And that's one of the things that the committee talked about extensively was to restrict the funds so the decision can't be changed in the future. It, it, it's a capital need that will be here forever for the school district. This provides at least a partial offset to those ongoing costs long-term. And it doesn't necessitate financing. It makes budgeting much easier for the district long-term with some of those fixed capital needs. We're not having to make choices then between operating and educational needs and reallocating operating funds to pay for long-term building upgrades. We will have a dedicated levy that helps to fund a lot of those.
Yeah, allocating to the things that are always going to be in need and always going to be recurring requirement is very prudent, especially after we get done with all the HVAC upgrades. Hopefully, the HVAC piece of that will decrease, and we can allocate some of that money inside those items a little differently. But it's always the required items that are going to need that money repeatedly enough and that you can't put off.
It's stability.
Yes.
And so we appreciate your, your professional insight into, you know, into that and bringing our district to having some stability there, so.
It's hard for me not to speak on the catch-up just for one minute. You were talking about the catch-up. So like, in the beginning, when I first came here, we had bought one bus in the last five years, and then my next five years, we bought 29. That was a catch-up. That's because the recurring maintenance gets put to the back, so just what you guys were talking about. So that's a very good example of what happens if you don't have a dedicated capital levy. The other thing is through the years, we didn't maintain the HVAC, so we went through $37 million of catch-up on HVAC. It's just hard for me not to make that statement because this is so critical to preventing that kind of catch-up situation.
And that was difficult to get that move made at that time, you know, with our financial situation. But it was so critical that we had, you know, we had to build it in somewhere because no matter how bad it hurt, because it had, it had to end, that putting it off till next year and putting it off till next year until you had the right amount of money, it just always comes back to haunt you in the end. So we finally got ahead of that, and let's not ever do that again, people.
Well, and I think that's what's important about continuing to talk about it and reminding ourselves of where we were and what that was like.
It was terrible.
Because that's how we avoid making that mistake or getting back into that spot.
And I will highlight, though, this doesn't fund all of it. But it is a significant step toward it, and it will assure a perpetual amount that the board will always have available to fund some of these needs. That will always be there.
Yes.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. And we, no actions necessary tonight. We're going to, you're going to bring this back to the board for a vote on whether or not we actually want to. We would have to put it on the ballot and get the voter approval for a no-tax rate increase.
And what's the, what's the endpoint for us to continue that going without it stopping in the middle when it expires? If, since it's going to, since it's going to sunset next year, when do we have to have it in the ballot issue in place to continue that going forward without a gap in that?
November ballot or April ballot?
November this year and April next year.
Yeah, you could do it in August before that would be kind of a problem.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mark, for your time. And Jennifer is back there, too. Thank you for your service to the Finance Committee. We appreciate it. And thank you, Marshall. All right, moving on to the transportation trailer bid. Dan Gilman.
Good evening, Melville Board of Education. I'm Dan Gilman, Transportation Director. Tonight I'll be presenting a replacement plan for the current transportation trailer. The current transportation trailer has been used since the late 80s, early 90s. It currently houses seven full-time employees, also utilizes, has been also utilized daily by every bus driver monitor. The current trailer has served its purpose for over 35 years, but is beginning to show its age. The roof needs replacing. It's only accessible by stairs, and there's a lack of bathrooms and water. We request, request this evening to purchase a new trailer to help address these concerns as well as allow for the increased efficiencies and technology support. The new trailer will cost $365,000. In addition to that purchase of the trailer, the district is estimating another $150,000 for electric, plumbing, and water. The total estimated cost is of $515,000. The purchase would be appreciated first step as we continue to plan for renovations and construction in the near future.
So just to clarify, no, there's no bathrooms?
Currently?
For you to, yes.
We don't have bathrooms or running water, no.
Yeah.
And there's seven employees in your, in this trailer?
Correct. We have to go to the other building to use the rest, the restroom facilities.
And when it rains, you got to go throw a tarp on the roof.
That was this morning, yes.
So for a little backstory, the facility, transportation facility was defined in the original Prop S facility planning. And unfortunately, when all the prices escalated during COVID, that was one of the projects that we had to strike from, we had to sign a resolution to strike it from the Prop S. We still desperately need new office space and a garage for the transportation-
Yes.
-facility. The garage is two bays that they have to pull in and back out of. There's no drive-through, and they service over 80 buses and I don't know how many more.
Totally, we have 102 buses and 70 white fleets, so figure about 170 vehicles we've serviced out of a two-bay shop.
Right. So while, you know, back in '22, when we had to strike and we were all sick about it, we didn't want to have to do it, obviously.
I understand.
But Jean and Tori and I had the opportunity to look at your trailer, and holy cow, it's, it was dilapidated in '22.
Still is.
We can't expect our employees to work in those conditions. It's quite literally deplorable, not to mention, in my opinion, the possible liability of, I mean, there's weak spots in your floor from water and, you know, somebody getting hurt there, you know, that could cost us a heck of a lot more than buying a trailer. And then I believe the idea is that we will be able to utilize this trailer. The plan is to continue to get moving on the garage and office, but we can also utilize the trailer, am I correct, Dr. Hogg, afterwards for either train, like a training facility for our bus drivers? Is that what you're thinking, or?
Yes. The approval of this will be a great first step in the planning process and transition as we move towards more construction and more renovation. But even as we look two, three, four years down the road, this is a great place for our employees to work. It's safer, it's better, it has the running water where they won't have to go to a different building. And then when we do finalize those plans for a garage or more office space, we can then turn this into either a larger training room, a place for the Transportation Director or employees to meet, or even just reutilize this throughout the district. But it gives us options down the road, and it's a great first step at this point.
How much bigger is this compared to what's there currently?
Currently, we've got a 60 by 24, and right now we're looking at 74. And the reason why I say 74, it's got a four-foot hitch on it. So it's basically 70 by 28. So it's 10 feet longer to accommodate basically the bathrooms and four feet wider.
So functionally, about the same space, but obviously the addition of the bathrooms is the remainder of the space.
Correct. So it's basically the same thing.
So footprint-wise, it won't take up much more than what's there?
No, but we're going to put it on, where the operations trailer is now, it's going to be on the other side because that building currently houses parts. And it's, yeah.
It also takes care, then you're going to use that trailer for your storage and operations?
Right, we'll use it, we'll use it for the parts location.
Okay, yeah.
We're going to, we're going to need some more money for the roof for it because that currently has a tarp on it and reinforcement of the floor.
Are you talking about repairing that piece of crap?
The one we're in now, yes.
No, I would never approve any money on that, that's for sure.
Well, if it's not people's space, you might as well utilize it for something functional.
Dan, you know that since the first day I walked in that trailer three years ago, I was appalled.
Yes.
And I have, this has not left my mind since that day. And at first, when I, when I saw the price tag on this, on this recommendation, I was shocked. And then when I did a little more digging and I heard a few more arguments about it and that the fact that it was going to be repurposed and once the building and everything is finished, it completely changed my mind.
Right.
And, and I, you know, I have, I'm looking at it through a different lens now only, you know, and that, and I do have a caveat, as I told Dr. Hogg, and this cannot be a pinky swear, but this has to be, if I could get it written in blood, I would, that we have to move quickly on this process because I'm losing sleep over this, okay? I can't have this any longer. And I would like to personally apologize to everybody, to everyone that's had to work under these conditions for this long, and I hope that we can make it right quickly.
I appreciate that. We all do.
So when this is installed, it looks like from the questions on e-boards, it's about a week and a half worth of work. How many staff are on-premise during that timeframe that would be displaced?
Actually, what I'm hoping to do is remove the parts off, out of that parts trailer that's going to be demolished, and that's where the new trailer is going to go. So there won't be any displacement there. The only one will be was when we bring in the new trailer, hook up the water and stuff, and then start moving the stuff from the current trailer that we're in to the new one. So we're talking about seven people. But the ideal timeline for this is before school starts.
So just set the new one up, walk over to the new one when it's done, and then?
That's what the hopeful plan is, and we have to do it because we run summer school, and then we got to get ready for fall, and so it takes time for us to do this, so it can't be a long downtime.
So it sounds like a mid-July, late-July project that is hopefully going to fall into place at the right time?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If I could get a motion to approve the purchase of the transportation trailer for $364,295 and related expenses for plumbing, electric, and IT connectivity, which is currently estimated at approximately $150,000.
So moved.
Second. Tori?
No, it was Ann.
Oh, Ann.
Yeah, she spoke, yeah. She spoke.
She's not shy. Good job. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
One last question that I think about it. Dan, I have one question, sorry. So basically, when we get the other parts of that, we're going to get secondary invoices for the hookups and the like that'll be done at a later time.
Yes.
Just to buy the trailer, get it moving for assembly and the like?
Yes, this is just, just to get the trailer, you know, started to be built.
Okay.
And then there'll be, the plumbing will come, the electric will come.
Sewer.
Sewer. All those bills will be coming.
Right, so sometime in August, we'll have the other half of it and know the final amount.
I'm hoping so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is roof bid. Mike Gag.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Mike Gag, Director of Facilities. I'm here tonight to present on roof replacement for this upcoming summer. The scope of this work includes partial roof replacement at Woolen Elementary and also Washington Middle School. This project will be paid for through the facilities department capital budget. With that said, I'd like to move to approve the lowest qualified bid submitted by Beatty Roofing. Beatty Roofing in the amount of $465,321, which includes base bid, professional contingency, and all other fees.
Anybody have any questions?
It's nice to see that it's just two roofs this time rather than the five or six we've had over the last few years.
We're getting, looking, we're looking good on roofs as well.
Mike, could you define professional fee?
That is our consultant fees.
I, okay.
Okay. If I could get a motion to approve the lowest qualified bidder, Beatty Roof, for Washington Middle School and Woolen Elementary School for a grand total of $465,321.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right, next is action items by consent. Does anybody want to pull anything? I would like to pull C. So if I could please get a motion to approve A, B, and D?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Okay, I wanted to pull C because we had a request from Beasley Elementary School to their beloved-
Mr. Mike.
Mr. Mike, and he was a custodian at Beasley. And so we've received an email, or Dr. Hogg did really, asking that they be allowed to name the field and the playground area at Beasley Elementary School in memory of Mike Edwards, who was affectionately known to the students of Beasley Elementary as Mr. Mike. What the writer that asked, requested this stated in her email, "Mr. Mike was not only a longtime resident of the Melville School District, but also a dedicated and beloved employee. His sudden passing has deeply impacted the school and the surrounding community. Mr. Mike was much more than a hard-working custodian. He was a role model who devoted his time and heart to building meaningful relationships with students, staff, and families. His commitment to Beasley earned him recognition as Classified Employee of the Year, along with numerous Melville mentions over the year." Over the years, I'm sorry. "To further illustrate Mr. Mike's profound impact, I have attached a letter from a former Beasley student who shares how Mr. Mike shaped his elementary school experience and left a lasting impression on his life." So this, the letter from Aaron DeRoy, class of 2017, from Beasley, "To whom it may concern, Mr. Mike was more than just a janitor. He was an advice giver, a teacher, a caregiver, and a good friend. I got to see him five days a week for a five, for the five years I attended Beasley. I don't remember a bad day with him. He was always nice, and it's hard being that nice when having to deal with kids all day every day, but he found a way to do it. Helping him feed the deer outside was the best part of the day because I got to do it with a friend. In fourth and fifth grade, we made a saran-wrapped ball with the saran wrap from all the apples kids discarded at lunch. It was the little things that he did for not just me, but other students that changed the way we went about our day. He is a great person, and I would do anything to sit down and have one more conversation with him. Thank you, Mr. Mike." So with that being said, we don't get these requests very often, and I want to acknowledge my sisters that are here. I know Stephanie, and I'm sorry, I don't know your other sister's name.
Kelly.
Kelly. So we are so sorry about your brother. But we wanted to make sure that we honored the request of this teacher and student at Beasley, not to mention the rest of the community. I know that when you posted Stephanie on your Facebook page about your brother, and I think the district did, the comments about him were unbelievable. I mean, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, and just one story after another about what an absolutely wonderful person he was. So we, as a board, really want to acknowledge him and appreciate all that he did. He clearly made an impact on many kids, and I think staff, too, at Beasley, from what I read, you know, on, on social media, which is kind of strange. But, I mean, he made a profound impact. So thank you, and we are so sorry for your loss, but we want to do this for Beasley and for the students and the community. So if I could please get a motion to approve action item C, proudly naming the Beasley playground after Mr. Mike.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
But it has to be the Mr. Mike Edwards play-
I think, that's the specific request. That is the specific request, that it be called Mr. Mike, so. That is the specific request, that it be called Mr. Mike, so.
That is also a question, my brother.
Oh, absolutely, I'm so sorry.
Oh.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Pat, my bad. Thank you.
He's the older one, so he gets-
Okay.
He's the one who's so scared of him.
Sorry about that.
Well, he was a sure fine guy, and all the things you heard about him are, I mean, if, if you didn't know him, everything you heard is the truth. He was just wonderful to be around, just a pleasure to be around. If you were having a bad day, he could fix it, so he was just a great guy.
All right. Next is communications, open period for patron comments. Do we have anybody? Nobody has signed up, so if Jeff could put us into closed session?
Motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meeting and correction and approval of same and other items under the Missouri Revised Statute 610.021, subsections 1 through 21, and 610.022, subsections 1 through 6. Hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees, subsection 610.0213. Preparation for negotiations with employee groups, 610.0219. And individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applications for employment, 610.02113. Legal action, causes of action or litigation, 610.0211. Records protected from disclosure by law, 610.02114.
Okay. Ann? You say yes. I have to do roll call, to go into closed, I have to do roll call.
You don't have to say yes.
You don't have to say yes, but, yeah, Ann.
Yes.
So, okay, Jeff?
Yes.
Tori?
Yes.
Peggy, yes?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jean and Serene?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries seven zero. If I could get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?